The Mobile City Council Tuesday, May the 24th, please stand for invocation led by Bishop Reginald T. White, the church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence following the pledge.
Lord, let us pray. Eternal Father, we thank you for this day and this hour that we're joined here together to make sound decisions by your guidance. God, in this hour, we need to know that you're with us and you're guiding us. We ask you to watch over each and every one of us in here today. And Lord, give us the strength to understand that all things work up for the good of those that love the Lord. And Lord, as you touch the heart and the mind of these great men and women that's in this office that serve in this great nation or this county, we ask you to give them the mind to understand that with you, we can do all things, God. As you govern to each decision, God. Let us forget about difference in this hour, God, that we come together to make sound decisions. We're guided by you, we're ordered by you, and we, the people, are with you in this hour, God, that we know that we are one nation under God. And we thank you for that. We thank you for life as it is right now, God. And each and one of us, God, give us the strength to endure what's to come in the future and what's now. And we put our heads together, God, leaning on your everlasting arms, God, to help us in time like this in our city, God, where chaos and our city where people need each other in this hour, God. Well, you have joined together a group of people, God, that you have great confidence in, that they can do the right thing at the right time. So I ask you, God, to govern them and strengthen them in their time when it look like there is no answer. We ask you, God, to give them one. We'll forever praise you for this hour, God. We'll forever praise you for our life. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we're going to ask everyone to please remain standing. Over the weekend, Jim Atchison, our attorney, the city council attorney, law firm, executive lost his son unexpectedly. They're going to have a service, a memorial service this coming Thursday at 3:00 PM at the Crown Hall downtown on Daughtry Street. And we're going to ask everyone just to give a few moments for a moment of silence on his son, Bowled Atchison.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everyone this morning. I believe that Councilman Day has spoke somebody, some people up this morning. He was trying to quote one of our former colleagues this morning, kept on trying to quote them, and I think he spoke them into existence. So we're going to have to put a muzzle over his mouth from now on. But we'd like to welcome everyone to our May 24th meeting. We do have rules at this meeting. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, please put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or a public hearing agenda item before entering a meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker will be allowed to address the council for three minutes. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute will remain to summarize, and the second bell will indicate that the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Final clerk.
Approval of minutes of May 10.
Second.
And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Final clerk.
Communications from the mayor.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everybody today. Thank you for taking time to come out and join us. I have just a couple announcements this morning. It's that time of year when I splash pads are starting back up. Now, we will officially open this past weekend, and they open from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And you can find splash pads at Sullivan Park, Seals Park, Tricentennial Park, McCants Shavers, and Medal of Honor Park. As I said, all of them are from 9:00 to 7:00, with the exception of Medal of Honor Park. Because of maintenance that has to be done, more routine maintenance on it than the others, it will be opening every Monday at 4:00 PM instead of opening early in the day. But we know that a lot of our children enjoy those splash pads, and occasionally you can see our adults enjoying them. So I look forward to seeing you at the Splash Pad. Friday Night Live. As you know, our Parks and Rec Department has been really in high gear this past year in creating more opportunities for entertainment and enjoyment at our parks. And one of the things that we are doing on a regular cadence now is they have what they call Friday Night Live. And this time, the Friday Night Live, they're referring to it as a boat bash at Cooper Riverside Park. The event will feature live music from Smokey Jones and the Three Dollar Pistols and the Spunk Monkeys. I know y'all all know exactly who that is. Fred, is that one of your bands? Not one of yours, okay. It's not one of mine either, but maybe we'll be there. Okay, it's a free event for the whole family, and the gates open at 6:00 PM at Cooper Riverside Park. One of the things that you'll hear the council talking about in subsequent meetings, not just maybe this one, but it has to do with what we refer to as the operating surplus or the capital surplus that the city is so fortunate to have. And really, this is a result of having, I'll say in one term, if it was a business, having a profits accrue and accumulate from year to year. As you may or may not know, we are required to have approximately $50 million in a rainy day line. But the remaining surplus capital is not to be hoarded by the city, but is to be deployed in a manner which we think is prudent in different capital projects to help move the city forward and improve the quality of life for all of our citizens. So there are some projects that you will start hearing about as we take what is now in the operating surplus, and we will allocate them into a capital account, meaning we have set that money aside specifically for certain projects. So I look forward to the conversation that the council will engage in, the council and the administration will engage in with public input to determine how that money will be spent in the coming months. At this time, I would ask Mary Ann Merchant to join me at the podium. So you brought your fan club with you.
I did.
Very good. Handsome and pretty fan club. So it is my honor, really, Mary Ann, and I'm just teeing this up. I do not know what they have in store for you, but I know that we're all, I'm just speaking on behalf of everybody, that we will certainly miss you. And when I think and I see you in my mind's eye, of course, it's getting in and out of the elevator typically on a Tuesday, with always a quick smile. And for that, we're appreciative. But the thing that, from the administration's standpoint, I think that we're most appreciative of is how forthright you are. I mean, there's nothing that can overcome someone's integrity, and we've always looked upon you as having that integrity. And when asked a question, assuming that you could answer, you always gave us the right answer, the forthright answer. So that we're very appreciative. For y'all, Mary Ann has worked for the city for 45 years, working her way up through the ranks. She had to, then 10 years old when she started. The youngest employee we ever hired. That be close?
Almost, almost.
Well, anyway, so at this time, I would call on the city council to make their remarks, and then I'll be back to the podium and join you in just a moment.
Before I like to read this proclamation, I'd like to say, you know, Mary Ann's name perceived, you know, her self, you know, when I first, you know, went into the business, you know, I always used to make applications all the time. And seeing, you know, Mary Ann's name, I was like, who is this Mary Ann Merchant, you know? And city giving hard problems and issues to business owners, and I was like, you know, I hate this lady, you know? But you're giving me a hard time, you know, trying to do business in the city of Mobile. But I have became to know Mary Ann as a very lovely person, very quiet, very humble. And, you know, I was just, you know, reading, you know, over 40 years of service in Mobile and the former government only being around, you know, you know, just about 40 something years, you know? So you've been around just about the former government, or really, you've been around since the former government. So pretty much just about every city council person you worked with. You know, even dealing with Fred and Beth, you know? But you have been a blessing, not only just to Fred and Beth, you know, and just not to just the seven of us, but to all the ones that preceded us and also Fred and Beth. I don't know what Lisa's going to do. Don't know what Lena's going to do. I don't know what all we going to do. But I will say, thank you. But whereas the city of Mobile and our citizens have been incredible fortunate to have Mary Ann Merchant serving them for the past four and a half decades. And whereas, whereas Mobile County is very, excuse me, whereas working for Mobile County in various positions, Mary Ann transferred to the city of Mobile in June of 1978. And whereas, over the course of the next 40 years, she received many promotions, starting as a staterager 1 and 2, secretary 1, 2, and 3, recorded supervisor, and finally working up to the position of assistant city clerk in 2008. And whereas, throughout this time, she greatly approved the functioning and efficiency of the office and served as a supervisor and mentor to many other staff members. And whereas, she was instrumental in implementing an agenda management system complete with the hyperlinks and training for the city staff to utilize it. And whereas, she's committed to the city and working of government and is standing outside the office and serving as the longtime active member of the League of Women Voters, Alabama Association of Municipal Clerks, International Institution of Municipal Clerks. And whereas, we are eternally grateful for the incredible works of Mrs. Mary Ann Merchant and her commitment to the city of Mobile. And while we will miss her dearly, we wish her the best of luck in the next exciting chapter. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, do proclaim today, Tuesday, May the 24th, 2022, as Mary Ann Merchant Day in Mobile, and urge all our citizens to join us in thanking her for her all her work and wishing her the best done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 24th day of May 2022. CJ Small, council president. Gina Gregory, vice president. District 1 Cory Penn, district 2. Councilman Carroll, district 4. Councilman Reynolds, district 5. Councilman Dase, and district 6, Councilman Jones. Thank you so much.
And just a little token of our support, some pretty flowers for a very pretty lady. And Mary Ann, we will certainly miss you. It really is something when you learn that Mary Ann has been here since before the change of government. So you have really seen and done it all. I'm sure Mary Ann has a lot of stories that some people would probably prefer you not tell, but might make for an interesting book or something. But thank you so much, Mary Ann, for all of your service, and we will really miss you.
I do have one joke. How many elections did you reach? I'm just joking, just joking, just joking, just joking. We're going to just say one more with the council also.
Yeah, the mayor.
And also Beth and Fred.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, we some more with it.
So, Mary Ann, I know the family is really happy that you're coming back and going to spend more time with them. But there's one person in this room that is really sad, and she gets the last word, and that's Lisa. I'm not sure she's going to be able to say what's on her heart or on her mind, but Lisa, I'll flip to you.
We said we were going to do this without crying because we want pretty pictures. All of you know that Mary Ann has been in the city clerk's office now for 45 years. I've been here this coming July 28 years. So we've been together 28 years. And everyone has a family of some sort at home through your friends, and I have a work family. Mary Ann is my work sister, and this is just so hard for me. So let's get to the fun part. Whereas Mary Ann Merchant always dreamed of living in the big city, she moved into an apartment in Mobile, leaving the small, obscure town of Sierra Land for the land of professional opportunities, the string of pearls, the city of perpetual motion, the city too busy to be divided, the one Mobile. And whereas she started working for the city of Mobile as a stenographer grade 1, earning a whopping $300 a month, and quickly promoted to stenographer grade 2. Over the course of the past 45 years, she's held positions as secretary 1, 2, 3, recording supervisor, and currently assistant city clerk. And whereas, within seven years of employment, she single-handedly dismantled the commission form of government, thereby eliminating the three commissioners and created the council mayor form of government. Since 1985, she has managed to get rid of 24 council members, four mayors, two city clerks, four council attorneys, and five city attorneys. And whereas during this time, our office and other departments even came to rely on Mary Ann's never wavering devotion to proper grammar. Having never met a red pen she didn't like, she is affectionately known as the comma police. And whereas she has been absolutely essential to the functioning of the city council office from allowing council members to take up residence in her office while she tries to get her work done, Beth, Fred, to spending countless Mardi Gras seasons preparing her famous breakfast casseroles and taco soup. And whereas, she met and married Clarence Merchant, who years ago brought her back to Sierra Land. We are sad to see her once again whisked away by the man of her dreams, away from the bright lights of the big city. We will miss her laid-back demeanor. Mary Ann, there's a fire. Oh, okay, well, I guess we better, where's that vest? Lisa, it's time to go downstairs for the meeting. Her non-OCD ways, go grocery shopping. She throws everything in the basket, smashes up the bread, doesn't keep anything wet and separated, drives all of us crazy. And her amazing calves. dearly, but we wish her all the best. Now, therefore, I, Lisa C. Lambert, city clerk, do hereby proclaim on this her last official city council meeting, happy retirement, Mary Ann. Do what you want, when you want, if you want, in Mobile, and urge all of our citizens to join us in thanking her for all her work and wishing her the best done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 24th day of May.
So, Mary Ann, for your dedication, your loyalty, and what you've meant for the city of Mobile, it's my honor to present to you this medal for exceptional performance throughout the time that you've been here. And know that we all love you and that we will miss you. And God bless you. So let's go around and have a picture, okay?
Also, the key to the city. In the words of a former council person, while this key will not unlock any doors in the city, so don't go try breaking into anybody's house, it will unlock the hearts of all of those that live here and come to visit as you've done with us.
Thank you all so much for this recognition. I just wanted to slip quietly out, but I knew that wasn't going to happen. But I have, you know, 45 years, that is a long time. I mean, I literally was a teenager when I started here. I got married here, I had my three kids here. I got my degree while I was working for the city. So it's been a real pleasure. I've had wonderful bosses, starting with the first city clerk, Richard Smith, and then Glenda Morgan, and now Lisa Lambert. So, and I've had some wonderful coworkers, not only with the city council and the city clerk's office, but all my fellow city employees. And I will deeply miss them, but I really appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Fred, Beth. Fred, don't, you're first, you're close.
When it's good.
Have to get the light right. We need one this way.
Is that okay? He stopped now. Your anniversary. Mary Ann's family is present. If you all would please stand.
Okay. Lisa, do we get to tell our favorite Mary Ann story? Go ahead, go ahead. Oh, really? Well, Mary Ann, I got to tell you the story. I was 34 years old when I first got down here. And what many of you don't know, after one night Clinton and Fred hijacked me and probably tore my head off until they gave me the first five gray hairs that I ever had on my chin. And it turned me probably to one of the meanest people you'd ever want to see. So I would get off the elevator every Tuesday morning, and this lady would always scream, "Good morning, William." And my favorite response was is, "What's so good about it?" So, but that went on for eight years. Every time I got off the elevator was like she could sense I was getting off the elevator. I couldn't even see where she was. It was, "Good morning, William." So, but that led me to one of my favorite statements that I tell everybody today. And that is, is that every day is a good day. Some just better than others. So that's the kind of effect that Mary Ann has had on everybody that's been here. You know, there's no such thing as a bad day here. Things might not happen the way you want them. But just take it as it comes and do the best that you can with it. So I appreciate that from you. And I still will hear you constantly when I get off the elevator because you still do it now, even though I can't see. "Good morning, William." So thank you for everything that you've done while I've been here in my two, well, now, third term. So thank you again. I do know I'll see you at Mardi Gras, the holidays, Christmas, and every time Fred's here, I'm sure you'll be here too, right?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Dase.
I'd just like to thank Mary Ann also for all of her years of service. And, you know, she's have put up with me for the last nine years. And, you know, I know a lot of times I'd call Mary Ann or go in there and see and ask her for something. I know she was saying to herself, "What the heck does he want that for?" But she'd always gin it up for me and give it to me. And I really support your, I really appreciate your support and help over the years, Mary Ann, and I hope you find, as I've indicated on the card, I hope you find retirement the best job you ever had.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Penn.
Mary Ann, in this short time, I think it's seven months now, you is just really amazing person. When I found out 45 years, I said, "She must have started at five." Like, this is, like, Mel Stimson said, 10, I believe, is five years, you know? And so it's just pretty amazing because I believe you got 40 more. But you're going to be able to enjoy your retirement. Many blessings to you and your family. But thank you for everything that you have done in this time since I've been here.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Just, as one of the junior council members, I've actually had dealings with you long before that. And I can tell you, whether you're sitting here or out there, if you have to deal with Mary Ann, you're going to get a smile through the phone, a smile on her face in person, and she's going to try and help you out regardless of the situation. And that's the best the city has to offer right there. I can't fathom 45 years. I'm at 30 with the government, and I don't know if I got another 15 in me. But that is the heart of who she is and the selfless service that she brings to work every day. And thank you for that. We're going to miss you. Happy retirement and have a blast. Appreciate everything you've done.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Reynolds.
I would not be the only one who didn't share my comments. Mary Ann, I haven't known you that long, but I appreciate all that you've done for me. And I, too, like Mr. Daves, have come to your office and asked you for various strange documents from years ago. and asked you for various strange documents from years ago, and somehow or another you've pulled them out. Also, now knowing that you've been with the city 45 years and you've dealt with every City Council this city has ever seen, some things sort of align and make sense to me. I guess it was probably a month or so ago, no one was on the council floor, and I came to you and said, "You know, I've got all these binders and books and things. I think I need a bookshelf." And you kindly said, "Okay, I'll go with you and let's check out what you're looking at." And we looked around my office and said, "Yeah, okay, I think that works." And I think you knew, because you've dealt with so many councils before, you don't need a bookshelf. He'll find a place for that stuff somewhere. So, thank you so much for your service. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much again, Mr. Murphy. Thank you. You will be very well, well, Miss.
Mr. Reynolds, that, you're absolutely right. That is not unusual for Mary Ann. The yin and yang. When you come to the City Clerk, she traditionally will say, "Well, no, you'll have to wait." Mary Ann, on the other hand, when you go to her, and Fred can attest, and Beth can attest to this, Mary Ann will say, "Okay, well, we'll just look into that. We'll get back to you."
It turns out I don't need a bookshelf. So, she was right.
And thank you so much, Ms. Murphy, for your years of service. Thank you. And it's also good to see our former colleagues, it's Beth Rich and Fred Richardson.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I've just got one more comment. And that is, today is Election Day. If you have not voted, I would encourage you and your family and your friends to reach out, and let's just make sure that everybody has, takes advantage of the opportunity to cast their ballot. Thank you very much.
Attorney.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. They're properly moving in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to declare the structures at 2620 Halls Mill Road, 801 and 1/2 Kentucky Street. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
This opens up the public hearing for the sale of properties. If anyone would like to address the council, you may do so by coming down to the podium, by stating your name and your address. If anyone present? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Today is a public hearing to rezone property located at 6288-100 and 116 Hillcrest Road from R1 and LB2 to B2.
This opens up the public hearing for the sale of property. If anyone present would like to address the council, you may do so by coming down to the podium, by stating your name and your address. If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. David Clark.
Good morning, everybody. Some great, more great news from the City of Mobile. You know, every year, the Department of Tourism, David Clark, by the way, Visit Mobile, my colleague, Vice Emily Gonzalez, Vice President of Marketing Communications. But every year, the Department of Tourism comes out with an annual report done by Dr. Kevin DeRobbie from Auburn University of Montgomery that gives the statistics for the prior calendar year of tourism throughout the state. And I'm proud to announce, because of the great leadership by so many people in this room and our partners in the city, that 2021 was an all-time tourism record spent by visitors of $1.5 billion. That's billion with a B. That's 200 million more than any other previous year on record. And just keep in mind, we still weren't out of pre-COVID issues. And I think it speaks well for our city, all the great things that our city is doing to enable that. We had 3.3 million visitors, which is also right at pre-COVID levels. Hospitality, tourism, jobs, 21,000 employed in the city. Supporting that, we had 1.9 million visitors in hotel rooms. So, lodging revenue was an increase of 7% over the all-time record year. And this year, this year, we're pacing over 20% in lodging tax collections over last year. So, you know, average daily rate that was led by an increase of average daily rate with flat occupancy of about 63%. So, I think the important thing to note there is that Mobile is back to at or better than pre-COVID levels. And not all destinations can say that. And, you know, there's just a lot driving that. It's just great leadership by y'all in this room and by our partners in the field. You know, I think one thing that changed that, I think we have to be mindful, is the Tourism Improvement District that you approved about two and a half years ago. That provided about $1 million more in marketing resources. And it's very accountable. And one thing that a program that was expedited that we spent there that we never had the resources to do until that program was $170,000 that produced 1.7 million in revenue. If you just take those things and you multiply it, that's why, that's how you get to 1.5 billion in spends. So, you know, we wanted to highlight those things and share that news. We've shared those statistics with the City Council, with the mayor and the administration. We've also launched a website, workinmobil.com. We hope that you'll be supportive in getting that out there, because we have to really restore our workforce. It's been devastated in hospitality and tourism. There's, it's such a fast track now. So, we're working with our high schools, our colleges to really promote that. There's just a great opportunity out there. So, you know, the future of tourism is bright. You know, when you look at now Africa Town, it's going to turn the story and the experience early next year. The airport downtown moves. So, we wanted to thank the City Council, the mayor, the administration, the county commission for your tremendous support.
Any questions from this council? All right, thank you, Mr.
Reverend David Edwards, following Titus Thorne.
Good morning.
Morning.
David Edwards. I reside at 670 Fisher Street, 36607. I come today not on behalf of People United to advance the dream, although I'm the president, I'm a local pastor, and a citizen of the City of Mobile. On May the 14th, we were shaken as a nation by the terrible attack of ordinary citizens out just getting groceries and doing what ordinary people do. I know I'm not telling you all anything new. However, we can't overlook it. They were somebody's children, parents, grandparents, friends, and someone's spiritual and support confidence. They were targeted because of the color of their skin. And a conspiracy theory that there's some vicious plan to purposely change the demographics of our country under the weight. This conspiracy feeds off fear. Fear by a group of people that they are losing control, losing their power. And the terror of the conspiracy causes impacts, not just the directly impacted, but communities in all our communities. That's the point of terror. That's the point of divisiveness. This week, as we prayed for those directly and indirectly impacted by the horror, the role of divisiveness rhetoric keep coming to mind. I've got a outline of a speech to say, but I'd like to share one thing that's very personal and close to my heart. In life, we practice principles, one plus one is two, whether you're counting people, cars, houses, or money. Andrew was a 16-year-old high school student that had a prom coming up that he was excited to go to. And he had a task to clean the yard, make sure his room was clean, and make sure that he picked his clothes up out of the bathroom in order to go to that prom. Well, Andrew got home excitedly and cleaned the yard. He cleaned his room. But when he got ready to go to the prom and take a shower, he forgot to get his clothes up out of the bathroom. When his parents went and looked to make sure that he had done all his tasks, they were very proud of the yard, and his room was spotless. But in the bathroom, his clothes were still on the floor. Andrew was sharp, ready to go, with his boot near in his hand for his date. And his parents told him that he could not go. Baffled, disappointed, and hurt, he asked why. They shared with him, Andrew, you did the yard, you did the room. It was what you didn't do that caused you the problem. Let's do the right thing. Let's make sure that each community, each citizen is represented and represented properly. Because truly, dogs don't have a color. Bears don't.
Yeah, thank you so much, Reverend.
And I appreciate you allowing me the time to come.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Titus Thorne, followed by Barbara Cadell.
It's Mayor Stimson, to the city administrators and to the city council. My name is Titus Thorne. I reside at 110 South Bayou Street here in Mobile, Alabama. But as we gather here today, all across the state of Alabama, major decisions are being made at the election polls. These decisions will place immediate impact that will affect our personal life, our family, our community, our city, and our state. The day until 7:00 PM, voters will go to the polls to decide who will represent them. Our vote is our voice. The U.S. Constitution does not require us to vote, but it gives us the right to vote. It allows our voice to be heard, not just by the sound that comes out of our mouth, but by the checkmarks we make by each candidate. Our vote gives us the opportunity to elect persons that align with our ideas, our morals, our values, our beliefs. And for months, the clergy, grassroots organizations, community leaders, and concerned citizens have approached this very same mic in sync and in harmony, singing the same song. And sometimes it seems like we're singing it in a strange land, that a majority-black city needs majority-black representation. The new redistricting map needs to reflect the 2020 census. A reflection of the census would provide the city with four majority-black voting districts. A fourth City Council district would provide the black community the ability to elect a candidate of their choice. We have approached this mic week after week. We spend a lot of time synchronizing our thoughts, harmonizing our intentions, and tuning up our voices to the melody that says, "A majority-black city needs majority-black representation." This is the only way our city can truly move forward, that's One Mobile. One Mobile sounds good. I love it. It's a top hit. The city loves it. Even the pastors who were singled out a couple weeks ago for coming down here, and I quote, "Week after week after week," we love it. We've been spinning this record and singing this song for months, that majority-black city needs majority-black representation. But let's let this song redistricting play out first, before we flip over the record, remix, add in, annexation, One Mobile, a majority-black city needs majority-black representation. Thank you.
Barbara Cadell, followed by Reggie Hill.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Cadell. I reside at 1321 Dolphin Street, a proud resident of District 2. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. As you can tell from the previous speakers, redistricting has been on our minds since the census data was released in the fall of 2021. Mayor Stimson introduced the final version of his redistricting plan on February the 10th this year. And it prompted lots of spirited discussion and submission of lots of different plans. On February the 15th, I suggested to you that you conduct a study of voting patterns, a racially polarized voting study. And I pointed out that this kind of study can be done by an independent third party that doesn't have any dog in the fight in the outcome. It uses mathematics to show whether or not a disenfranchised group has the ability to elect a candidate of its choice. It provides credibility and it ensures confidence in the process and in the lines drawn. Last week, almost two months after the mayor submitted his plan, you decided to move forward and conduct a racially polarized voting study. And I understand the nuts and bolts of that process will be hashed out next week in a committee meeting after the City Council meets. So, I come before you today to thank you for considering this reexamination of the voting plans proposed and to ask a couple of questions. Question number one, were you able to have all the maps reformulated using the same data platform? There appeared to be some kind of confusion as to who, what numbers were in what district. So, I asked that question. And also, what adjustments to the timeline for a June 21 vote do you envisage for your decision-making in order to allow adequate time for the study to be conducted? Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for coming down. And those are some of the questions that, you know, some of the council do have, Ms. Cadell. And looking in our committee meeting to, you know, try to get some of those questions answered by our attorney. But again, thank you for coming.
I commit. The answer to your first question on the revised map, the map has been revised. I have given it to at least two council members for them to make sure that all aspects of their districts are correct. That has been vetted. I plan to release it to the remainder of the council either this afternoon or tomorrow. I've spoken with the council attorney on the maps. So, hopefully, we will have it in ordinance form for everybody to review this week and hopefully have the previous ordinance corrected on the, that was part of the council's agenda and minutes from previous meetings. In respect to changing the date that we plan to vote on the ordinances, that will be up to the council. I, right now, have not discussed it with anyone. No one else has possibly discussed it amongst themselves that I'm aware of. So, I can't answer that. But as far as the maps, I look to have those on the agenda next week.
Reggie Hill. Ordnance is held over. 64029 Rezone Property located at the east side of Hillcrest Road, 326 feet of Ogle Road, from B2 to R1.
So moved. Second. They're properly moving in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Or in pass?
Consent resolution is held over. 58394 Assess Costs for Removal of Weeds, Wheatling Group, 1624.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moving in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Resolution is held over. I'll take all of these with the exception of 31451. 08444, 445, are approving purchase orders to KIG Vehicle Concepts for Chevrolet Tahos and to Scivers Ford F-150 Crew Cap Pickup. 08446, approved purchase order to Shaw Contract Flooring for synthetic turf at Matthews Park Baseball Field. 08447, approved purchase order to Musco Sports Lighting for repairs to damaged field lighting at Meadowlavanna Park. 08448, approved purchase order to Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems for 30 concrete light pole foundations. 08449, approved purchase order to Blue Planet ABL for spotlights and lamps for the Sanger Theater. 09450, approved transfer of funds from General Fund to Capital Improvement Fund to be used for the resilience assessment and plan.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moving in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
31451, update the American Rescue Plan, Action Plan. 31451, update the American Rescue Plan, Action Plan to include redevelopment for affordable housing.
Move to hold over for two weeks.
Second.
The proper move in second to lay over two weeks in a discussion.
Yeah, I've got one question to the administration on this specific item. With that pot of money, um, that, that this is coming out of, is there still, if I recall correctly, there's about 21 million still left in this pot of money, is that correct?
You are correct. If you make this allocation, there's 20, 29.1 million in that particular allocation. If you make this allocation, you'd still have a remaining balance of 21 million.
And the window is still open for any developers to bring bids to the city at this point?
We're going to have to go out with RFP again. We received seven responses or proposals to our RFP. Only four of them met the minimum criteria that they had site control or owned the location and they had the capacity to actually do the development. Out of those four, two of them were west of I-65, only two of them east of I-65. Uh, the Gaffer's Project was the only one that was ready to proceed, um, with this particular allocation. Uh, we're still in negotiations with the second development, um, which has to do with senior housing.
Okay, but if somebody, if another developer still wanted to come forward at this point, is the window still open to do that?
It is. We're going to have to probably put out another RFP to try to get more interest in development, um, as well as some of the infill housing that needs to be done. I think Mr. Carroll is very interested in.
All right, thank you.
Um, I, I guess the window to have on the contract is 20, year 2024, and all funds have to be split by...
So, the way I understand, Mr. Carroll, is that we have to have everything under contract by the end of 2024. We have to have all the money spent by August of 2025, 2026.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Layover for two weeks.
Ordinance is being introduced, 06030 through 64031.
By council rules, this will lay over for, uh, one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 31454 through 6474.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Second.
Proper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Under clerk.
31454, 455, and 456 are authorizing grant applications to the Department of Justice, Office of Justice, uh, Programs, Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative. Grant application to the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for State Homeland Security Program and authorizing grant application to the National Endowment for Humanities for funding to support digitalization efforts by the Mobile Historic Development Commission. 37457, 458, 459, recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premise is only license to In-N-Out on Spring Hill Avenue, for issuance of a special events retail license for the Prince Tribute Celebration in Cooper Riverside Park, and for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premise is only license to Brother Mart on Pleasant Valley Road. 40, 460, 461 are declaring the structures at 2620 Halls Mill Road and 801 and 1/2 Kentucky Street public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 58462, authorized removal of weeds, group 1627. 60463, 464, 465, 466, 467 are determining appropriations to Ariel Holloway Elementary School, Maynard Four Foundation, Spencer West Lawn Elementary School, Azalea City CDC, and Universal Youth Foundation serve a public purpose and approving payment. 60474, approve award a special bonus to the procurement department employee of the month.
So moved.
Second.
The proper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced, 01468 through 21472.
By council rules, these resolutions will lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings. 41473, call for public hearings to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Care Keepers Health Care to operate a sedan service scheduled June 7th.
So moved.
Second.
The proper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Five, Councilman Dave.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this coming Monday, uh, we recognize Memorial Day. Our country was brought into existence almost 250 years ago, uh, by our citizens, the leaders of whom took great risks, uh, to declare our independence. We declared our independence from a country which was at that time the strongest country militarily and economically in the world. It had just come off a, a victory of, uh, during the Seven Years' War, what we call the French and Indian War, which was really the First World War. The First World War. Uh, that war was fought, uh, all over the globe, including here. And, uh, Great Britain had emerged from that, successfully defeated all their enemies, and they controlled the, the empire on which the sun never set. Anyway, we went up against them, and after a long, long struggle, we're victorious. And the, uh, the standard those men set has been followed all through the rest of our history by men and women, uh, who have protected our freedom throughout the years. This is a day, one of the days which we can especially set aside to remember the sacrifice of those men and women, uh, from that day to this day, who have provided the freedom that we all enjoy. So please take some time over the weekend, and especially on Monday, uh, to remember that and especially tell your kids about it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dave. Uh, District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. There's been a lot of interest in the, uh, development, uh, for the Gaffer Building. Uh, so we have scheduled a community meeting for tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the Innovative Portal on St. Louis Street. Uh, we will start at 6:00 PM and hopefully be no longer than an hour and a half or two. Uh, we plan to have the developer answer all questions that you may have, uh, in respect to the development and how it's put together, its financing, uh, the opportunity for, uh, rent there, and, uh, it's the whole building makeup. So I look forward to everyone that intends to be there, uh, and I look forward to answering those questions. Uh, also, there was a mistake on, uh, tonight, on the 24th. Uh, that meeting has been moved till the 31st at Stewart Memorial. That's the 31st Stewart Memorial CME Church on the avenue. Uh, that meeting is our standard community meeting for that area, also a last in a series of meetings. It's where we've been talking about redistricting and everything that comes with it, also blighted properties and the ability to acquire properties from the city and get those back onto the tax rolls. Um, I had the chance to also attend a meeting with the, uh, Mobile Police Department, um, at Harmon Recreation Center on last week. Uh, one of the things that was big that came from that meeting is the need of safe places for teenagers in this community. Uh, there was a time when our recreation centers were considered safe places and they were open from, uh, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Uh, some of the times in which some of our recreation centers are open to those times have changed. Uh, there were some conversations about possibly changing that so that in areas of true need, where teenagers are out and about because parents work multiple, multiple jobs, that we provide some safe places for teens that need a little bit of interactive help from the community so that they can, uh, enjoy the day. So it was a good meeting, uh, was a get out, get out term from the, from the public and look forward to a few more of those throughout the community, uh, but look forward to possibly partnering with those so that we can also in, in, include a youthful turnout, too. I think we need to hear more from our youth and what they need because times have changed from when some of us were kids. So some of the things that we think they want were some of the things that we did that their lifestyles might not, uh, uh, accommodate in the way they do things today. Uh, Mr. President, that is all of my announcements for this week, uh, except for today is Election Day. We've all know what's been said about Election Day and, and how people vote and who's not voting, so let's make sure that we get out and go to the polls and vote, doesn't matter who you're voting for, but please, let's get out and vote and let's show the state of Alabama that Mobile knows how to turn out for an election.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Carroll. Uh, District Six, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my wife was watching an episode of Stranger Things last night, you know, where aliens come in and weird things happen. Today, I think we got abducted by aliens because Reggie Hill wasn't here making comments. Um, so I, I've, I've had to pinch myself and make sure that we were still normal. Um, I, I want to echo comments made by my colleague, Joel Dave. You know, it's fitting that today is Election Day and we do have the freedoms to vote largely due to the sacrifices made by the men and women of our armed forces, um, many who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Um, we've seen so many here from World War II that, that have come down and been recognized, and we're losing those on, on a daily basis. Um, but they truly are the fabric of those that have given us the ability to, to go out and vote. And if we don't take part in that right and, and exercise that freedom, then we take those lives for granted. So I would encourage all of you to vote. I will tell you, the last election we had here, this city's turnout across the board was abysmal. It was absolutely abysmal. And to not take the opportunities to go and make your voice heard, I, I would encourage you, let's change that culture in this city and get out and do our part to let our voice be heard. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Jones. Uh, District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will have a District Four community-wide meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the All Complex on Azalea Road where we will discuss redistricting, uh, the 3-1-1 process, public services, and public safety. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this past weekend, we had a great time at Creek Fest, um, in District One. Um, I had the opportunity, I saw Councilman Carroll came out and, um, but, um, I want to thank everybody that came out. We had a great time, family was out there. I, I actually got in a canoe, I had to turn around quickly because I forgot that it might be some alligators out there. I got a little nervous. Um, but I, I really did have a good time. People was out there just having a great time. I was by myself, but if I was with somebody else, I probably would've stayed out there a little longer. Um, but I had a great time. Also, coming up, we have our entitlement committee on May 31st, um, right after Councilman Reynolds' committee meeting at 1:00 PM. We'll meet right after that meeting, um, and we'll be discussing the Gaffer, um, project. Um, so we're inviting the public out to come out at that particular time. And then also on June the 7th, we will have our community meeting, um, at Center Point Church on the Service Road. And so we're inviting the community to come out, be a part on June the 7th. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Penn. We're going to hear from the one and only, only lady on the council.
Gina Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that, and, uh, today I have no announcements.
Wow.
I know. Keep, keep mentioning yourself, right?
I'm gonna take her time, but then, no, just joking. Uh, I would like to, uh, piggyback behind, uh, Councilman Carroll, um, he was speaking about the, uh, police initiative on last week. Um, I'm going to ask and request, um, because the council had passed a lot of money within the past couple of weeks, uh, if we can get our report on at least in the next 60 days, 90 days about, uh, young men that we hire for the youth. Yes, yes, because as Councilman Carroll has stated, you know, times have changed since, you know, I was younger and he was younger, all of us was younger, and, uh, exactly need to know, you know, if this program is actually is working and everything, and if the council can, you know, be, be brought to speed in the next 60 days, 90 days, that would be great, at least mid-summer. You know, okay, appreciate it. Anything from the administration? And I do wish every citizen a happy Memorial Day. Uh, anything else from this council?
Motion to adjourn.
Proper to move in second and in discussion. All in favor?